I'm going to call to order our work session. If everybody could please quiet themselves and their phones, please. Bow with me, please, for just a moment. Father, we're so grateful for this opportunity to lead. And your word guides us and tells us that if we commit things before you, Father, with the right motives and the right heart, God, that you will bless the work of our hands. We ask today that you bless us in this work session. As we work on behalf of students and educators across our state, we ask that you discipline us, that you lead us and guide us in all that we do, that it might bring you ultimate glory. In Jesus' name. Ladies and gentlemen, I just first want to thank you all for being here today and for your interest in being in our work sessions. I want to thank Dr. Reynolds for his leadership and guidance this last year. There have been many, many ways in which he's led that many of you have not seen or heard about. And he's been a wonderful, disciplined example, working through difficult issues. Board members, I want to thank each of you for your contributions to me personally. I thank you for your time that you've given me. You've been very, very gracious with me, not just this last year, but before this last year, in really helping me understand the issues that we face in each of our districts. And so I just want to humbly ask that we focus and work together as we start a new school year with many important challenges before us. I'd like to do just a tiny bit of housekeeping as we get started. If you are in the room today and in the room, and I'm going to say this over and over again, but if you're in the room in our work session, we as a board just ask that you be present, that you be in the room. We need all of you listening and helping us as we make important decisions. If you need to be in your offices working or you need to be other places, please don't be in this room. If you need to be typing, talking, texting, and doing other things, please do that outside the room. We need you to be present. How we're going to handle guests in the future? If guests are presenting to us and have driven in from any distance, they will be invited to present first on our agendas. Board members have consistently told me, as I've reached out to them, that this is their preference. Board members have also shared with me that they wish to handle the agenda in an efficient manner. So today, as we move forward with our agenda, board members, you have a pad and paper for those of you who like to use your electronics, because today we've got several presentations that are going to give us information and data that we've not seen before. I'm going to ask that you please write down your questions today about that data. Just receive that data today. Write down your questions. Please give those questions to Dr. Mackey. He will follow up and superintendent's report next month with any questions that you may have about data you've not seen today. Our timeline today is that we're going to work through the first items on our agenda. We'll go to lunch and come back. My hope is that we'll finish up our day by 2:00, 2:30 today after lunch and be out of here. So we're going to have to be really efficient with our time. Dr. Mackey, have I forgotten anything that I discussed with you?
No, that's good.
Okay, so I'm going to turn the meeting over now to Dr. Mackey. And very grateful again for all of you who are in attendance today. We value your input and your presence in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. West, so we, with that, if those of you who have an agenda know, that item three starts with several programs that we are reviewing with Alabama A&amp;M. We try to get these in alphabetical order, the way they go. So Jan Miller, you will be last. But that, this will, as Ms. West said, and she mentioned to me before the meeting, it allows those of you who've traveled just for this part to finish before lunch if you need to get back. I know Dean Fairbrother called me outside, was planning to be here, and he said he could not, he had to get back to Auburn, but he has his folks here. So with that, do we have anybody here from Alabama A&amp;M who will look at that program review? And then could you please come up? And then so others will know, we'll just follow with Athens State, Auburn, AUM, South Alabama, and West Alabama. I know we've got several today, but I think, I told Ms. West, I think we can get through all of these before lunch. Yeah, come on up. Anybody else who needs to come up? Oh, yeah, pull this slide down if somebody can. We'll get back to it in a few minutes. Let me see. Do we really have slides?
If this is U Teach Alabama, then I'm in the hot seat, too.
Oh, okay.
I'll stay in the hot seat.
So I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Mackey. Good morning, everyone. We are very excited and teaching and leading to have the opportunity today to have several of our institutions here to join us, as well as Dr. Meadows. We have been working for a while. They've been working continuously with U Teach. And they have asked to develop these U Teach programs. So Dr. Meadows, as well as his team, have been giving them a lot of guidance in terms of what they need to do to do this. With these U Teach programs, all of them have a concentration in the STEM disciplines. And so, as you know, that's very important. We need more of that for our children in K through 12 so that they can have a better understanding of all the areas of STEM. I'm not going to talk long. We're going to begin now. We have Dr. Meadows here.
But tell us who you are first.
Okay, I apologize.
I just realized, I know you talked last month, but board members only see you once a month, so.
My name is Alethia Hampton. Very happy to be back with the State Department of Education. I'm in the Division of Teaching and Leading, and I work with Educated Preparation. And so we have Dr. Meadows here with us. And for our first institution, we have Alabama A&amp;M. We have Dr. Walton with us.
Dr. Meadows, do you want to say anything first? Or Dr. Walton says it's pertinent to all of them?
Sure. So thank you for hearing me out two or three months ago when I told you the good news about U Teach Alabama and the funding. We had six sites. Each of these sites needs approval under Innovative Status to implement their program because a U Teach program is different than our traditional program. And as just a reminder, UAB has had the UAB Teach program under Innovative Status for, since I believe, 2013, maybe 2014. And here's the thing that will probably make the final decision easy on all of you. They all have the same curriculum. It's a U Teach, it's a U Teach, every site is a U Teach model, which is an implementation of all the same curriculum. Syllabus numbers will change, course titles may change, but the content of the coursework, of the overall approach, is exactly the same because they're a U Teach site. And I don't know if I said this last time, but Alabama went from having one U Teach site to, once we brought onboard these other six, to having the highest concentration of U Teach sites in the nation. Texas has more U Teach sites, but Texas is a lot bigger. But if you look at the population and the number of teachers that are, we have, we have, we are now leading the nation in the concentration of U Teach sites. So with these, all these programs want to, are seeking permission today to begin building their program under Innovative Status. Unless Parker Hampton corrects me, this is not about actual approval of their Innovative Status. This is about approval to begin building those programs.
Good morning. I'm Lena Walton. I'm Dean for the College of Education Humanities and Behavioral Science at Alabama A&amp;M University. And today, we are requesting to build our program, or U Teach program, which we are naming AAM U Teach. This program, as you heard before, is built around the U Teach curriculum that already exists. And some of our courses, we have changed the names of the courses. And we are going to be changing some of the content of the courses to meet the U Teach requirements. So for example, for the first one-credit course that we normally offer to students who are beginning college, which was an orientation course, we're taking that course. We are going to be revising that course to make it a U Teach entry course, which is required by U Teach. So we are not adding anything to the student's graduation requirements in terms of credit hours. We're actually, in some cases, reducing the number of credit hours that we're requiring students to graduate with. Another feature of the Alabama A&amp;M Teach is that we, as an HBCU, we, our program just focuses on the most vulnerable students, the most vulnerable students that are coming through Alabama A&amp;M. I'm a little bit distracted.
That's okay.
And so we, we are recruiting from every section, every area. And we are recruiting to also encourage the people we are recruiting to stay in Alabama, although they might be from outside of the state. Another feature of the program at Alabama A&amp;M, and I'm going to correct you for one of the things you said.
Absolutely.
The U Teach program is not a concentration in the STEM area. The U Teach program is a degree in the STEM area and a concentration in teaching. So in our program, we have 66, 33 credit hours of teaching field courses, which is centered around the content area of the course, of the program. And then all the other programs, all the other parts of the program will meet every other aspect of the requirements of the state. So we, we are meeting the requirements of AGSC stars. We're meeting the requirements of the number of credits that we need for the teaching field. We're meeting the requirements for the number of credits that we need for specific methods courses. And as we go through the program, what we do is reshape what the courses look like that we have at Alabama A&amp;M to fit them neatly into the U Teach model. Are there any questions? By the way, at the end of the program, we are hoping that we will have graduated about 100 STEM teachers into the field.
And I'm sorry, I might not have heard. What is your timeframe? What are you, what are your hopeful, you know?
We are on a four-year timeframe, starting fall.
Starting when?
Starting fall, we are on a four-year timeframe. We had a planning period between January and the end of summer. And starting the, we are hoping to start the curriculum in the fall.
Okay. I'm sorry if you had said that I didn't hear.
No, I didn't.
One note there. Some of the programs are thinking of trying to do a quick start with maybe upperclassmen or with students in AUM program. But the regular program, we, just like A&amp;M and AUM do, where they, they will, they're recruiting student training.
Okay.
And that, and that, the orientation course that you mentioned, that will start in the fall because it's an exploratory course. It's not a full course within the, like, the TEPP program for undergraduates. But the recruiting is starting now. And the four years is a U Teach site is built by, they start, four years to build first the freshman courses, then sophomore, junior, senior. But there is a quick start option, if universities choose to, where they can try and build that out faster to get upperclassmen who are interested to go ahead and get them finished with possible graduates three years from now.
Yes. We have a target of having possible graduates in two years and a semester. So what we're, what we're doing is recruiting from students who are already in the STEM program and are beyond that beginning semester or the beginning two semesters of their four years. And once we recruit those, the courses are tailored to meet their needs. So they wouldn't go back to the orientation class, which they have already taken at the beginning of their entry to Alabama A&amp;M. There is another course, which is the step two or a combination of the step one and step two courses that we will offer to those students to acclimate them to what U Teach is about and what they're supposed to be doing. And something else, Aleth, though. There is something else. During those orientation courses, the students who are in those courses will be entering elementary classrooms and assisting with small group or just experiments for science or, you know, small group math, those kinds of things. So that by the end of that semester in that course, they're deciding whether or not teaching is for me. So they don't go all the way through the program, accumulate a lot of credit hours, and then they say, this is not for me. And that first course, Alabama A&amp;M, has budgeted to provide them with a part of the fees, of the tuition for the course. So I think we're, we're providing them with 75% of the tuition for that, those particular one-credit courses.
Thank you very much for coming today and sharing with the board. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me.
Miss Meier.
Thank you.
So Auburn University is next. And I know, again, I said the dean had to leave, but I know he has to be there. Oh, is it? I'm sorry, Athens State. Sorry, Auburn. You've got to move to let her out anyway.
Did I freeze half hours? Don't hit me.
That's true. Like, we should start listening by distance from Montgomery.
That'd be handy, guys. I'm way up there. So I am actually really, my name is Dr. Katie Hall. I am the interim dean of the College of Education at Athens State University. I am incredibly grateful to Dr. Walton for going first because she covered everything incredibly well. One thing that you may be aware of that's a little bit different about our program is that we are upper division only. And so for us, our step one, if they're doing the individual step one and step two at the undergraduate level, they are actually doing those with our community college partners. We have MOUs in place with our three closest partners right now, which are Northwest Shoals, Calhoun, and Wallace, to get those classes offered beginning this fall before approved. Starting with our upperclassmen, we'll be offering the combined course on campus. And I don't know if there was anything else I needed to... Because she covered it so well. Oh, and my, well, I didn't allow to say that. If not, I would say that. Our actual, our kickoff for our program, the reason that I am the only one here for our program is because our kickoff is happening right now on campus. So, so the dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, this is a combined program for us. It's a partnership between the two colleges on campus. So the other dean is actually, we wonder twin divided, and he's handling that one while I came here.
Do you have a production goal for how many you hope to place? How many teachers you hope to?
I believe our production goal, oh, God. I was going to say our enrollment goals were 50 new?
Fifty new.
Fifty new, yeah. Our programs are significantly smaller than some of the larger four-year schools.
It's just a consistent question we have every time.
I've never made a one-day meeting before, so I'm learning.
Yeah, you're doing awesome. Thanks for being here.
Well, we want you to come back, so just.
Okay.
Everything's good. All right. They're looking at increasing, it looks like, by about 25 per academic year throughout the four-year. Does that look great?
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
And the number of graduates, so in their fourth year, so producing about 27 in their fourth year. And then remember with these sites, that becomes the production goal every year after that. It's not just.
Approximately 100 by the end of the fourth year.
That's not the fourth year, but then you have to go to their fourth-year goal, and then you carry that out. So that's the other thing that's great, is there's a certain number within the four years, but then that scene, that final fourth year is what they keep doing for the rest of the time. That's exciting.
Any other questions? Thank you for traveling such a distance to be with us. All right, Auburn now.
All of my colors. Hello, I'm David Crowe from Auburn University, the assistant dean for assessment and certification.
I'm Paul Fitchett. I am the department head for Curriculum and Teaching, where our science education program is held.
So currently, we are seeking approval to proceed with the AUM Teach program. Our colleague, Dr. Walton, said it so well. Focusing on the science education fields in collaboration with the College of Science and Math. We hope to recruit students in those particular majors to join general science, biology, chemistry, and physics education with a goal of 50 per year, which would result in about 200 by the end of the four-year period in those exploratory classes. With zero staff, we've actually got some students already interested in that program, in the step one, step two exploratory. I think we're about 15 students right now, which we've done just by word of mouth from the COSAM majors. So these are students that would not normally pick education as their primary major. They're completely COSAM students that we are recruiting to add on teacher certification so that they can join a very rewarding career in education.
Yeah, and I would like just to add, a unique feature of the AUM Teach program is it's a double-major program. So our thought process there is that we want to make sure that our candidates receive a full, full major in their field, whether it's biology, chemistry, physics. And we also want to make sure that they receive the pedagogical teaching background that they need to be successful in the classroom. Currently, we're working with our, with COSAM, our colleagues in COSAM, in the development of the courses. As has been pointed out by our colleagues, the curricular diet is the same. It's really just making sure that the content, those course content, fit within the appropriate courses at all my universities. We're also very excited, too, because we feel like this will help both of our colleges. In addition to education, there's persistent issues, persistence issues in COSAM. So we believe this will keep their students in their majors as well. So we're really excited about it.
Thank you all for being here. Board members, any questions, please, gentlemen? I wish, again, I'm sorry. Dr. Meadows, are all of them starting, hoping to start in the fall after due? Okay. I didn't want to ask everybody the same question. This is safer. Thank you so much, both of you, for being here.
Thank you so much.
Auburn University of Montgomery.
Auburn Montgomery.
So just for your, for your information, Auburn is, I believe, the only program that's doing the double major. That's not required of a U Teach site. And many are doing, I believe, most are doing what A&amp;M is doing of the STEM major with a concentration in education resulting in certification.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Brooke Burks. I'm department chair of Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology at AUM. This is one of our co-directors, Dr. Samantha Junkin. Our program, very similar to what you've already heard. We have a STEM teaching minor in collaboration with the College of Sciences. So our students will be majoring in biology, chemistry, computer science, or mathematics, and also do the STEM teaching minor. We plan to have over 100 by the end of the five years. We already have some students signed up for the step one in the fall, so we do hope to start in the fall as well.
And to add to that, for our step one course, we have partnered with MPS. They have six STEM labs in their elementary school. So our students will be going into those STEM labs and working with those teachers. In addition to that, we have created a survey and sent it out to all of the MPS administrators and people in charge of STEM to see what can we do on our program to help them in preparing our teachers for their schools. So we're trying to shape our curriculum so that it not only fits U Teach, but it fits our area the best it can.
That's exciting. That's exciting. We'll hope to hear back how it goes with the STEM labs in Montgomery.
Yes, we're very excited.
That's great. Board members, any questions?
You mentioned five years. Everyone else has mentioned four years.
I'm sorry, I missed four.
Okay.
We have projected five years because it's like, at the end of, you know, once you're off the grant, what's it going to look like? So we look that way.
And you're doing five certifications?
Biology, chemistry, mathematics, and computer science.
General science?
Well, general science is also. So that's the other one that's there as well, general science.
Also chemistry.
Right, because they have a general science chemistry track and a general science biology track. Right.
On our resolution, we've got a pre-health one, too. And I think that's maybe why somebody asked, is there a pre-health?
There's a pre-health biology track for those biology majors who want to pre-health track. And we have that model already in the state because with UAB and their approvals, the initial one, they have several different tracks: environmental biology, microbiology, medical biology.
Three math tracks?
Yes, several.
And there's, there's three, I think, three chemistry tracks, including chemistry education.
All right, thank you so much.
Now we have University of South Alabama.
Dr. Christopher Parish from University of South Alabama. I am Alabama-born, raised, and educated. I'm so very happy to be here. In writing the proposal, we had to look at a lot of our own data from previous years. And so from 2018 to 2021, South Alabama only produced 10 undergraduate STEM education teachers. And so luckily, we have an alternative master's program that produced a little more. But I think it shows the barriers in place to traditional certification. And so as of this morning, we have 16 students enrolled in our step one course. And so these are 16 students that would have likely not considered a career in education. And they are registered for step one in the fall. And so we have, we have hired an advisor recruiter for our program and a master teacher out of Muggo County for that. So we propose U Teach South, and we will start with general science, biology, physics, chemistry, and mathematics.
Can I ask a quick question? This, I should have asked this already because it's come up with some others. But you get the hot seat. So the general science, my, I have the general science degree. And so I wonder, it might be more a question for me because that's not a, like, a biology, there is a biology degree, and then you add on, I understand how you add the teaching on to it. There's not a general science degree in most colleges, but we have a general science teaching pathway, which, again, I went through 35 years ago. So is, what would their degree, their science degree be?
Yeah, great question. I continue what we did at UAB when I was there. I think they're still doing it. Dr. Parish mentioned the advisor recruiter. It's a hugely important role. And our advisor recruiter would meet with the students and let them know, like, if they're getting a biology degree, they could do the biology certification with no extra coursework, nothing, and they'd be passing the biology praxis. Great, slammed off. But schools want a general science certification. So, but if they wanted the general science certification, then the advisor recruiter helped them understand that they needed to take an earth science course, which the biology major didn't require. And they would be taking the general science praxis. And so they had to be prepared for that, possibly doing some study. So we tried to tell them that upfront and give them, make them, give them an informed decision. But if you look like at UAB's site, you're going to see where the biology major, it talks about general science slash biology certification. Well, there's no such thing, and you guys know that. It's a, they got to make a choice. The same thing happened with chemistry, where their chemistry major gives them directly the chemistry certification. The same thing happened with chemistry, where their chemistry major gives them directly the chemistry certification and prepares them directly for the chemistry praxis. But if they wanted to do general science, then they needed to be aware of the additional courses they might be required to take and the additional knowledge they would have to have on the praxis. But that's where that advisor recruiter really comes on board to help the students understand the requirements and the benefits of the U Teach program, and then how it interfaces with the university's certification process, major praxis requirements, things like that. The advisor recruiter even starts telling them about scholarships that they can get, like the AMSTEP scholarship, the federal student loan forgiveness program, really helping them understand, this is what you get with this major and the other opportunities.
And if I may add one thing, Dr. Meadows mentioned the earth science, but with your general science, your composite areas are your biology, chemistry, physics, earth science, and space science. So they have to have coursework that crosses the gamut of all those areas.
Okay, here I go again. I heard you say that you had 16 enrolled. Now, what is your goal after your four years?
So beginning in the academic year 2025, 2026, we anticipate graduating 30 students with U Teach certification and maintaining at minimum 30, three years' college.
Okay, thank you. That's great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
University of West Alabama.
Yes, I'm Renee Rogers from University of West Alabama, and I'm the Associate Dean that have been typically involved with the U Teach program. And I'm with Dr. Miller, who is the Dean of the College of Education. Our program is similar to all that you've heard so far. I think the one difference, of course, we're also targeting the undergraduates that are majoring in the STEM field and getting an education minor essentially in STEM. And the coursework would be the U Teach coursework for the STEM minor. But we're also looking at our all-day population. And we're looking, trying to work with the State Department to determine how we can modify our current programs to add the U Teach courses in, what can we take out of the current programs that we replace, that we put the U Teach in in place of, so that those all-day students can get out there and get to working faster as well. I'm also looking to see what it would take to take, if a person already had a master's degree in, say, biology, you know, why make them take other biology coursework if they already have the content? So, you know, what would it take to get them to be STEM certified? Would they have to go through a full all-day program, or could they just take the education portion of the course? We do that program similar with our instructional leadership. They don't have to take all of the coursework that, if they already have a master's degree. And so that's what we're looking at, kind of three different pathways into teacher certification.
Yeah, and another unique thing, UWA serves a lot of students on our online modality. And so we are definitely looking at, how can we take the U Teach model and do it in an online environment? And so we're excited to partner with U Teach Austin, they're excited too, because this is something they've been looking at. How do you do this online and how do you? So we're super excited to collaborate with the, we're gonna do it in such a way that you have a face-to-face field. So like, the campus, you know, they do a lot of seminars and a lot of face-to-face. But with our online classes, we're gonna be looking at running some Saturday classes, where we would like them to come to campus, you know, experience, hands-on, do those things. If they're at a distance and they can't, then they'll join remotely, but we're gonna encourage, you know, and we're trying to do it on a weekend where their normal duties won't get in the way. So we're super excited about that opportunity.
And we have some funds that can be used to bring them to campus for travel. We have, again, the scholarships for our Step One and Step Two courses that we can offer as well.
You may have said it, and I didn't write it.
I didn't.
Estimate on the number.
Renee, do you know the numbers that we project?
I'm gonna look to Lee, I think we could, well, we looked at enrolling like 20 to 40 students depending on the academic term. You know, we start off a little bit slower, but then each time that we would be adding more students each term.
We like the others. Yeah, and us like the others, we have not had a lot of undergrad math and science majors, you know, graduates. And so we do believe that this is in the right track and we're headed in the right direction, so.
I do think our numbers are growing though. We've been offering the NOICE scholarship that pays the full tuition for math or science. So, you know, our numbers have been increasing, and we're hoping that this program really, you know, adds a little bit more to that and can increase our numbers even more.
Starting this fall, how many do you have already? Do you have?
I don't know that we actually know the fall campus to you.
We don't, because we've been working through. Yeah, we have registration, we have a big push next week for our orientation. And we've also been, you know, we went through all of our academic councils to get everything approved. And I'm very conservative, and I would not get the chief there until everything was approved appropriately.
And I'm like, do it, do it.
That's why we're a good team. I'm like, no, we can't do that, and she's like, go ahead.
And the only reason I ask, some of the others are kicking off like today or whatever, so that was the only reason I asked.
We've had our kickoff to introduce the program. But we will be, we've hired our master math teacher and master science teacher, and they're ready to get to work and really promote the program next week during orientation.
Can I think of the kickoff as like, if a, like a grant funding kickoff? That's what the kickoff, that's what the kickoff is, is it's a celebration of, we have this funding, we're getting started. Every campus has kicked off the program.
To start.
The start, but they're also all poking, praying, waiting, chomping at the bit. Jan and I are both bitch-ophers, chomping at the bit to get the approval so that all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and there's no question about beginning the recruitment. But like I said before, it's the approval to start.
Correct.
Because it's not, there won't be any program admission TEP or alternative masters until the programs come back to you guys for approval of the actual innovative status for the program. But it all makes sense.
It does, and I guess then my question was in reference to where Psalm said, the first year they were projecting 25, the second year, so I guess I was asking for a projected number, but y'all haven't really done that either.
Yeah, we have projections.
What was your projected number?
About 40.
Forty?
Yeah.
Per year, okay.
And we kind of grow over time too.
Right.
And really, with the Alt-A and being able to modify that curriculum a little bit and to lessen the hours, we hope to recruit more students. I mean, the online students we're seeing, they won't, you know, quickly, fast, efficient, timely, cost-effective. And so I think this is gonna be a great recruitment, so once we get those permissions approved.
Thank you.
Another thing that happens with the U Teach site that's a little bit different than traditional programs is a U Teach site builds a whole campus culture around the program. So there's going to be a location, a physical location.
We have a great business yes for that, we're very excited about that.
You have full-time master teachers that are 100% dedicated to teaching and supporting the students and doing the field experiences. You've got the advisor recruiter that we mentioned, they do momentum-building events with the students. There's usually a student organization, that's, so it's the site, future, at UAB Teach, it's famous. Future Alabama math and science teachers.
Love it.
Not the coolest name out there. And the students came up with that. And so you see these young people getting really excited about teaching, and it becomes a place for them to have a campus identity. At UAB, we actually have the data that being part of UAB Teach was created a retention in the STEM major. So the UAB Teach students had higher persistent rates in the, not the education major, in the STEM major. And we think it was because of the family, community, environment. And it didn't hurt at all when you're struggling with physics, and one of the master teachers is a physics teacher, and you could just say, hey, can you help with this problem? That didn't, we even then began to have like seniors beginning to tutor sophomores. And that happened with like, one of our senior math majors was tutoring students who were struggling with Cal One in the math major. Well, that Cal One course is the gateway course, and if you struggle there, you're gonna have problems. So it just, that's part of, all that to say, we don't really know where the numbers are gonna be, because you've never had this kind of emphasis and support for creating math and science teachers other than at UAB.
Thank you so much, all of you for being here with us today.
As a reminder to y'all, I've told you when I was here before, these programs, if they, based on their projections from their grants, once they're all fully implemented, we're talking about 215 new science and math teachers per year, every year after that. And that includes UAB. And we also want to thank you for how you're constructing the agenda, because as you can tell, we are all from the four corners of the state. So if you don't mind, we're gonna slip, is it okay if we slip out now?
Sure, excellent.
Because we still gotta go north, south, east, and west to get my comb.
If I can say one thing before they all leave?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to thank all the institutions that appear here today, came to support your programs. They are really, really excited about doing some wonderful things. They've been fully supportive. They hit very quickly, Dr. Meadows, I think I'll apologize, and say, I need help. But each time that I called upon them, they were right here, ready to answer questions, to explain what they were doing. So it's been absolutely wonderful, and so thankful and grateful for your presence.
Yes, we're very proud. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And Dr. Meadows, please, please, a second.
Okay, so that's A, exit. We can go back to the superintendent's updates, that's good. A is actually what I did this morning, I think I mentioned that, that I intended to brag on those folks in this meeting, but I thought, wow, wouldn't it be good while the TV cameras are here, Governor was able to be with us to do so. I know Dr. Chambers is still here with us, and I don't wish Washington somewhere, but I've already done that. So again, a big thank you to them for that work. But we will go on to B and C, which are both Tina Hammons. The first one, as she comes forward, is really not a presentation, but you all remember that one of Governor Ivey's first matters of business after her inauguration, I think it was the next day, she issued an executive order about some reporting she wanted us to do. We were thrilled to do it, because it allowed us to really brag on the good work going on. And wanted you to have a copy of that, you have a hard copy, I think, in your notebook, or no, there, it's a hard copy coming around. It's just, again, it's not a 72-page presentation, but you have it. The governor's received it already, because I think she wanted it by June 30th, but we've not released it publicly, because we wanted the rest of the board members to see it before it went out publicly. But that is that, and with that, I want to turn it over to Tina Hammons, you all know. Came on board with us right at the start of the legislative session to lead the legislative work. By the way, her two associates, Cole Wagner and Connor Johnston, are not here, because they are at that meeting in Charleston with legislators that I mentioned, Dr. Anderson, it's spoken at. And that's going on right now, and got to talk to them earlier this morning, and they said it's going really, really well. We have a big delegation from Alabama there, and of course, from all across the southeast. So they split duties, and Tina stayed behind to do this work and some other things, meetings that we needed done here in the state, they went over there. And then I think they're splitting duties again next month, there's another meeting, big legislative meeting, and Tina's gonna go to that, and they're gonna stay here and cover work in state, so it's nice to have Tina. Ms. Hammons?
Well, good morning, everyone. Certainly honored to get to be here and present for you all today. As Dr. Mackey just said, I have been here just over four months. So I am still very much in the learning phase of this job. And so I ask for a little mercy, I guess, on that point, because I may not know the answer to every question, but I can find the answer out. So what I've been asked to do this morning is a quick run-through of the major high points that occurred at the legislature this year. As you know, this is not going to be comprehensive, but also, also please know that, as we've discussed before, I'm available to each of you for any questions, any explanation, any documents, anything that you need. There should be a version of this in your, in your.
Simulink.
Simulink, thank you. And then also, like I said, we just gave out the copy of the executive reports. So let's get right to it. The first thing is the education, this is a little different. The Education Trust Fund. It's pretty sensitive.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, there we go. All right, the Education Trust Fund. So these are the first things to run through. We have a new salary matrix for LPNs and nurses, and so we had a major salary increase for LPNs, and there is an intent in this legislation to fund one per school in fiscal year of '29. We have a new $15 an hour minimum pay for all personnel on a salary schedule. We have a new 2% pay increase for all public education employees, and an updated teams matrix that also reflects that 2% increase. We have an increase in monies for career coaches, reading coaches, and math coaches. So each LEA will get an allocation for a career coach. If a K3 school, they will get $80,000 for a reading coach. And we got $25 million more for math coaches this year. We also have some individual stipends that are available for teachers. Count 5,000, NBCT 5,000, plus another 5,000 if teaching in a hard-to-staff school. And then some $1,000 stipends for teacher mentors, I believe that was an increase. And then for special education and speech pathologists that are state-funded, we have $1,000 apiece for each of those. Other enactments included, of course, our supplemental appropriation. So the supplemental appropriation included what we're calling this year Advancement in Technology Plus. So that is, I mean, in the past, you've heard about A&amp;T, and this is going to be called A&amp;T Plus, because it is a different fund, but we'll be able to cover a lot of the same things. We also had some monies for college and career readiness. In that, we have $10 million more in that. It was 360 million in the A&amp;T Plus account. We have a little bit of a change for the student materials. There's going to be a pre-funding of the CIS student materials. We are getting 20.4 million of the classroom materials will be allocated in a pre-funding mechanism, rather than having to wait for the new fiscal year of October. We have some monies for school safety grants, and for summer math camps, and for fleet renewal high needs. So we have 40 million in the school safety grants, 24 million for the summer math camps, and 20 million for the fleet renewal high needs. We have sent out a memo on all of these already, and that has information for use processes, how to apply for the funds, and timelines for all of the different districts to take a look at. And of course, that's Dr. Payne's team, he is working through all of that, and his team is available for any questions on that. Some of the other financials that we dealt with included the grocery tax. I know everyone heard about tax rebates this year. We ended up with $150 per person and 300 per family. But there are some triggers in the future for how this mechanism is supposed to work in the future. It is supposed to be tied to the tax rate, and the ETF receipts have to be at a certain level for there to be additional reductions. That said, the law can always change next year. So we have a framework for going forward, but we'll have to see exactly how that works out. There were some changes in the thresholds for competitive bidding. We are now up to 40,000 for some of the, I guess, requirements that are involved with that. And then public works, also, we changed that threshold up to 100,000. So that gives some flexibility to the school districts with the things that they're able to do. And there was a change in the elected superintendent's compensation. There were some issues about the requirement to fix that compensation before their term, and so that has now been changed. So those were some of the other financial things. So now we can move on to the new laws. So here's a list of some of the new laws that were received in the educational, in the educational law area this year. Lots of different things were talked about. There were so many different things that didn't get passed, things that were talked about. I know all of you were aware of all the different school choice, just different things that were out there, new school calendar, possibly a mandatory kindergarten, or basically the requirements to be sure that you're first grade ready. But a lot of these things didn't pass, but these are the ones that did come through that we think were the major ones. We did get an Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact passed. There is nothing to do at this time. We actually were the ninth state. There was a tenth state that did pass it after us, and so that will be forming, and we will get some rules for that. And then we will move forward with the things that we need to do to react to that. There were some laws addressing parental rights, sudden cardiac arrest prevention. That is actually going to require the department to develop some materials to educate people, athletes, parents, and coaches on the dangers of sudden cardiac arrest. We had the Safe at Schools Act, which addresses adrenal insufficient, insufficient. We had the Safe at Schools Act, which addresses adrenal insufficient, insufficiency, and the students that we attend to that have to have medicines for that type of an insufficiency, and so we will be working through how that will affect our schools and our nurses and the things that they will need to do. Special education classroom cameras, this, again, is not mandatory, but this is something that if the funding is available, it would be an opportunity for schools to have some cameras in those classrooms if they so elect. We had some changes to the opportunity for retired law enforcement officers to serve as SROs, and for the way that their retirement would be affected if they get to come into a school and serve as an SRO. So that's something that a lot of people are looking forward to taking the advantage of this year. There was a lot of conversation about how to pay to get into a sports event, and so although that wasn't really something that we were working on that much, that did get passed, and so now cash will be available as a payment process at all events that we have. The Atlas Bill had some updates to it. The main thing that we're working with is we will be, of course, complying with all of the data pieces to that, but there were some tweaks to the graduation requirements, and so we will be dealing with that over the coming months. And then we have three brand-new laws that we will address. Each one with a different slide. So we can move on to Financial Literacy is the first one. The department already mandates that students take a course that includes financial literacy, and this bill aligned our course with the legislature's intent to make sure that we have high standards in this area. We are fifth in the nation already for access to financial literacy. We will create an exam that would test on the standards of the approved financial literacy course, and it will be provided to all school districts and administered to each student, and then the district will provide those results to the department on a yearly basis. This is Ms. Martin's team, and they are working on the things that we will be doing to make sure that we fully implement this law. But of course, this was one, as we talked about, we like to tell our story. This is a story that we're already proud to tell about the good access that we have to financial literacy classes here in the state. The next one is the Principal Mentorship Act. This one had a lot of conversation, I know that we're dealing with wanting to make sure that we have the opportunity for good leadership in all of our schools, and so this was one of the things that was born from that idea. The mentoring program will be developed for, starting with new principals, and then there will be a leadership academy that will be developed. We are currently soliciting applications for the design team who will drive this program. It's being lovingly called as the Dream Team, as it was titled over at the legislature, and so we'll be accepting those applications, and those can be sent to me or to Connor directly, and we'll be able to work through those, and I have an email address for you all if you need that. Comprehensive professional learning plans will be developed by the principals by the spring of 2024, and then the funding will begin in 2025. And then we also had an alteration to our alternative teaching opportunities, and so we had Act 23451. We will be modifying our administrative code rule pertaining to the alternative teacher program organizations in response to this law. We will be considering the prerequisites that are outlined in this law for the approvals of ATPOs in the future. And then we will have reporting annually, and some new prerequisites that include that the ATPOs are not on probation in any of the states that they operate, that they have already successfully certified at least 10,000 teachers. And then the teachers who do receive these alternative certificates shall participate in our Alabama teacher mentorship program, and the staff here at the department is working through this as well, and the way that we will respond to it. So we can move on now to the changes to existing law. We had a few acts that had some major changes. The first thing, of course, is always money. And so the Education Trust Fund, Roll and Reserve Act, we had some changes to it, and we had the creation of the Educational Opportunities Reserve Fund. And so the Educational Opportunities Reserve Fund is going to have to have at least 300 million in it before it's accessible. I think it was funded at 354 this year, if I'm not mistaken. This change established that maximum, that there will be a max amount to be appropriated to the ETF any year, created the Educational Opportunities Reserve Fund. And then we have three other funds that we also are, of course, working from, the Budget Stabilization Fund, the A&amp;T Fund, which this year we're using A&amp;T Plus instead of the A&amp;T Fund, and then the ETF or any A&amp;P. So all three of those, we are now going to be learning about how they will work for the future. And then we had changes to some of our laws that we already have, so instead of new ones, these are changes that we had. Alabama Literacy Act, first up. We added some things to the way that the Literacy Task Force would be addressed for the future. Age appropriateness is going to be added to the rubrics for reviewing all core reading and intervention programs. Bonnie Short, who is the Director of ARI, has been added to the membership of the Literacy Task Force. Of the seven new members, two must be public K-12 teachers. We will have two new at-large members that will be appointed by the President Protem and the Speaker of the House. And we have some term limits now. We had some changes to the assessments, which are listed down there. The previous list that was approved by the department will have five years for use, and then the new LTL list will have three years. And then there's a little bit of transparency that was added, where we will have, all of our rubrics will be public, and the measurements used to determine eligibility and compliance for all assessments will be transparent and available publicly, and then also the meetings will be posted. So those were the changes there. We can move on to the AAA, the Alabama Accountability Act. Probably most pleased to see the things that occurred here, simply because of understanding quickly the history of this bill, and the usage of this bill, and the impact that it has on our students. I think there were some really great changes to this bill, and we are really thankful to be able to see this happen, and looking forward to how it will affect our students over the coming year. The scholarship amount has been increased from 6,000 to 10,000 per student for all grades. The definition of eligible student is going to change and expand, so that we have more children and families that are able to take advantage of this act. We removed the failing school and non-failing terminology for the schools, and so we no longer have the lowest-performing schools listed as the bottom 6%. We now are going to be using the priority and qualifying language, and we will be using the indicators of D and F off of the report card instead, to determine which schools will be priority and qualifying. As we explained a lot this year, taking a look at this, that 6% number creates the inevitable 6% that is always failing, and so when a school does move out, a school has to move in, and this changes that. And so now we have the opportunity to be able to reward growth. We have the opportunity to be able to look at these schools in a completely different way, and we have the opportunity to hope that the bottom can arise, and so that's what we would like to see through the achievement that we can have with this new testing program. The increased cap, the cap was increased from 30 million to 40 million initially, and it could go to 60 million if certain grounders are met over the coming years. So those were the trainees to the AAA. We can move on to the Charter School Act. So the original Charter School Bill was amended in some ways this year that changed some realignment of the governance, restructured the appointment process, there are some funding adjustments, and then also some newly established training that will go along with an orientation program for all of the members of the Charter School Commission. The department is currently working with the Charter School Commission, and the staff here is, are working together, basically, to work through all of the changes that happened in this act, and to make sure that all of the things that were instantly enforceable under this act are being adhered to. And so we are going to have some guidance and some memoranda and things that we will be disseminating over the summer, that will help enact this act and all the changes that occurred from the Charter.
Chambers, you clarified that this act took effect immediately.
It did.
Because we saw a transition period from the department, and the law that was passed was effective immediately, so all those actions, the role of the department, were immediately in effect.
Immediately, and so we are working through that right now with the Charter School Commission. Next up, the legislative reports. So, when I walked into this job, I found out that there is a lot of reporting that goes on, that we send a whole lot of information to various different places, and some of those reports were due within a couple weeks of me showing up, so there was a little bit of a scramble to get through everything and to figure out what all needed to go where. But the next round of reporting was in June, and so we had quite a few reports that were due June 15th, June 30th, mid-year, which is June, and then also the things that were now required to be given over because of the executive order. So all of you should have gotten a large email with a bunch of PDFs back in June. We had reporting on ARI and the Literacy Act, the Middle School Computer Programming Initiative, computer science educator training, Alabama Technology in Motion, Alabama Math, Science, and Technology Initiative, and Alabama Science in Motion, along with the handout that you received today, which you would have also received back then, but this is a little bit different formatting of it, a full report here that's just the executive orders and has the executive order in the front for you as well. The only thing to note about this data, if you look at any of the data, and you say, "Well, this appears to be 2022," or "This appears to be spring," or something that's a little bit older, and now we're in the summer, and you're looking for the new school year, we are operating on various different years here at the department. We're on the school year, we're on the annual year, we're on the fiscal year, and even though the school year wrapped up, a lot of the data that we need for this reporting has not actually been collected and disseminated the correct way for us to put together, the things that we can put together in August, and in October, and in December. So if you do have anything there that doesn't look like it's as ripe as it needs to be, you're probably about to get an update to it this fall, and so if you have any questions about those reports, just let me know. Memos and communications. So, ever since the legislature wrapped up on June 6th, we have been working with staff in the department to perfect the guidance that needs to go out from Dr. Mackey concerning all of these changes that are here. The different things that will need to happen will be rule changes that will need to come through this board, which we will be putting forward. I think we have a few already today that's to be presented, and then the memoranda that comes from Dr. Mackey's office. And so we have sent out quite a few of these. Here's an example of a couple of them. We have sent out some concerning the assessments for the Literacy Act. This is the supplemental, a copy of the supplemental up here, so that schools know what to do about their money instantly, and about the contracts they need to do for their books. So those are the things that we've done there. And then the next steps are to further work on the implementation of all of the new laws, to work through our processes to determine what things worked and what things didn't this year, and to get ready for the next steps, which include some visits across the state to our leadership. We are going to be working with Dr. Payne's group for their budget meeting, so that we can learn more about the budget and the way that the budget will be developed for 2025. And like Dr. Mackey said, both Cole and Connor are at a conference now. We'll have another national policy conference next month, and we'll be working to tell the story of this department to the legislature over the coming years. And so we're very honored to have this work and to be here, and like I said, I'm available to you all as needed, whenever, and so are Cole and Connor, so please get with us with any questions you have about anything that we've gone over.
Board members, I've got about three minutes before we're gonna break for lunch. Does anybody have an immediate question?
You were talking about the newly passed laws, and so some of those are requirements that the state board will be required for, what, rules and regs and all that? So, will that, we need that information, and you're gonna pass that along to us in time, event that we can...
Yes, ma'am. Like I said, there are some things that, for example, the Teacher Compact is a great example. That law has been passed, but there's not anything to respond to yet, and so we, I think I might have jumped the gun a little bit, because I was ready, let's do memo, memo, memo on everything, but so much of it is not ripe yet, so what we started doing is meeting with the staff here, and they are the experts that have all of the knowledge, all of the subject matter expertise, that they can guide us on when we need to do things. So, and then also, as you all are aware, we have kind of the four-month timeline to get things done for rule changes, so we're very sensitive to that timeline. And so, like I said, there are a few things we're changing right now. I think we're gonna have a list of things for you in August, and then we will start doing those. Now, the things that we don't require board rule changes for, but we just need to comply with the law, or we need to make sure the schools have knowledge about how to comply with the law, those will be done through memoranda, and we've already sent quite a few of those out in the past month, and are drafting several today, so.
Because I'm one that likes that advanced notice, so I can get it in my brain, read it, study it, and then...
We will definitely work on doing that.
Thank you.
In my previous role, I'd really like to commend the staff, Connor, Johnson, and Cole, and Tina, and of course, our general counsel, Jason Swan, because some of those transitions required some legislative and administrative and legal work, and they've been very helpful in doing that, and staff realignment and understanding some drastic rule changes the legislature made, some of which they didn't understand the full impact. And so I've had several phone calls about those things, and you all have been masterful in communicating to me, and to staff, and to the legislatures, some of the fallouts from what they did, and that's gonna happen as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have a comment?
If I can make one comment, it'll be brief. On the SRO piece, so retired officers can now come back, serve as SROs, and make a full salary, not, they're not limited. You may have seen, there have been a couple of articles last year about that coming up again in the special session next week, and that's because the language did not include retired state troopers. So there are legislators talking about reopening that law already and adding state troopers in. I just wanted you to know, it's not starting over, but they may add in state troopers, and they'll have to amend it in the session, and I don't know that that will happen. It's not in the governor's call. For the legislature to add something to the call, it takes a two-thirds majority to do that, so it may not happen. But if you see an article and think, "Well, what is this?", that's what it's about. It's about opening up the law to add state troopers.
That's a good question.
Okay, Dr. Mackey, are you...
We are.
Okay, board members, we are gonna break for lunch. I've got 11:59. We'll be back here at 12:45 sharp. Thank you.
A lot of our comments got seconded.
Welcome back, everybody. My apologies, I'm going to ask for a little grace today on my first day. I'm five minutes behind on getting this back together.
One demerit, but you can learn it back.
I'll learn it back, I promise. So, we are going to move on the, with our agenda, to the item D, A-CAP 2022-23 Student Assessment State Data Overview. Do we know who's leading that discussion?
Yes.
Maggie? Whenever you're ready to begin. Dr. Maggie, did you have anything in mind for today?
Right, thanks, go ahead and start.
Thank you for having me this afternoon. Again, I'm just going to give you an overview of our state data at this time. Just as a reminder, this is hot off the presses because we just received most of this last week. Our districts are reviewing it as we speak now, and they have a few more weeks to complete that. And so the final data won't be available until the end of the month. So I just wanted to give you a heads up because you'll see preliminary on the slide deck as we go through. As you know, we just wanted to put forth again which assessments that we are delivering and also at what grade level, because sometimes folks want to see that continuously. But just give you that opportunity so that you would have it. Okay, so as we move in, I wanted to first start off with our participation. As we know, we've heard nationwide, and I apologize that the science was left out. We were still calculating that yesterday afternoon when I passed that on. And the one that's going to be published, I believe, does have that. But if you see that for each assessment, for the ACT with writing, we had around 33, I'm sorry, 93% of that participated, then 96 if we round up for math, and then, of course, 96 for science. Then if we move down to our summative, you have 99.25, 99. And then for the math, I'm sorry, for the science, it was at 98.95. And I think that you all have that. And then if we look at our alternate, and that should be alternate instead of alternative, but that's 94.68, 94. And again, if we round up, that's 95, and then 93.41. So you say that we are meeting, and when we do that compile it, and we don't count the overall, combining all of them together, but we'll have that by the end of the month, we will be over our 9, well over our 95% participation, meeting that for the state. We haven't had an issue with that even, and I think Dr. Mackey made this comment recently, is the fact that when we, even during COVID, you know, the year after COVID, even though we were a little bit lower than the 95%, we still were in the 90s, if not a high 80% participation, because that's usually not an issue. And that's a question that would get asked quite often, how do we do that? Well, it's pure determination by our districts and our principals and our teachers to talk to those students to make sure they're there when they're supposed to be there, not only for the instructional piece, but also for the assessment. Okay, we'll move into our high school assessment, ACT with writing. Of course, this is our 11th grade students. So I wanted to give you, last year we've heard that, you know, we know that you like to look at it from year to year. So we wanted to give you that breakdown of one year to the next. So we give you spring of '22 and then spring of '23. And you'll see that around about the same amount of students testing each year for each one of the contents. But if we move on up to the proficient, which is that, those last two columns, you'll see that we saw some gains with our ELA, 1%, that's still a gain. You have 2% for our math, which is 25%, and then 2% for our science, 33%. Our average ACT state composite score is 17.4. It's still a gain because it's .1. And we see that gain over, and I put three years there just because coming out of the COVID year, just wanted to look where we were, but also show that we are seeing some of those gains with ACT with writing. Okay, now if we look at our ELA for our summative, again, preliminary, you'll see again that we're still standing about the same amount of students, 52,000 to 53,000 each year. We have, when we look at our ELA, second grade, we've increased from 49% proficient to 54%. We have, we did go down in third grade only by 1%, you know? That, to me, is amazing. But some people will look at that and say, that's still a decline, but it's not that big of a decline. We only see 1% decline there. And we have not had time to really look into the districts or the schools yet, and that's coming at the end of the month, but you all will be able to pick that in your districts. Then if we look at the fourth grade, we did see an increase from 53 to 54%. Fifth grade, again, 47 to 56%. Sixth grade, 48 to 51%. Seventh grade, 45 to 50%. And then our eighth grade students, 53, they did go down 50 to 50, 53 to 50. So we only see two declines there. So I know that our instructional team will be looking at this, and they'll want to get down into not only the schools, districts, but they also want to get into the sub-hops to see how they can target and really put the instructions where it's needed and to help those students that may be, are going down a little bit. Okay, and so let's look at our math. Again, going through, we have our second grade, we went from 44 to 48%. Our third grade, 40 to 44%. Fourth grade, 32 to 35%. Our fifth grade, 32 to 35%. Our sixth grade, 29 to 31%. Our seventh grade, 18 to 21%. And then again, our eighth grade, that was seventh grade, and then eighth grade, 18 to 21%. So we see some consistency throughout that, even though it may not be the great gains that we would love, but we're still seeing improvements, I guess, now we start seeing that. And again, we know that our math instructional folks will be ready to dig into that, and they've already started asking when they can get some of this data so that they can really start diving in to find out what the instructional pieces they need.
Were you breaking down this data by school and student system?
Yes, sir.
Will that be available to us?
At the end of the month.
Right, right now the districts, this is hot off the press July 6th, so we just grabbed this at the state level, and we're starting to review and get into the districts to make certain that they're not duplicates, that the student information is correct. So we're looking at, within the next two to three weeks, we should have it ready to go out, and we can actually load it in simply.
Is it going to be embargoed at that time?
It will be made public on, if I'm not mistaken, July 27th.
Will we get it before it's released to the public?
Yes.
Is embargo data?
Yes.
So when do you expect us to get that embargoed data?
Within two to three weeks.
We don't have a set date, but publicly, plans to have it out the 27th. What is that, it's about?
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Two weeks.
The districts just got it, I mean, essentially, Monday was the first day they had to look at it. And we give them two weeks to verify and see if there are any problems. There are always a few problems here and there. It's not going to be enough of an issue to.
Should that be the 24th, if I'm counting correctly? Two weeks from yesterday is the 24th.
And we're going to publish it, Dr. Mackey, excuse me, but we're going to publish it on 30th. That's when everything will be validated, because once they, yes.
And Dr. Mackey, if I may add this to it, the districts actually have two weeks to actually conduct their validations. We added that extra week in case there are errors that are found and that the department has to go in and work with our vendors to do work on it. So that's the reason I'm saying two to three weeks. If there are no errors, we're ready to roll it out. But if there are some conflicts in the data that's received, we would need time to work with our vendors in order to get those data sets correct.
I guess what I'm specifically asking is when will the embargo data be available to state board members in advance of the general publication? Dr. Mackey?
Probably the 27th, yes. So the 27th is the target to give it to you, and then the 31st for a public release. If there's a, if there's a big data problem and we can't hit the 31st, then obviously, we may not have it ready until 27th. But the plan is to have it for you on the 27th. And so far, and we've got our vendor here with us, DRC. So far, we've had no real glitches in timelines this year, so that's been great. So we would expect to get it to you on Thursday the 27th, and then public release on Monday the 31st.
We'll get, the board members will get statewide data, not just our districts?
That's what you want, yeah. It can be loaded, it'll be.
Let's ask the board, board members, would you like?
It's what I want.
Would, I understand, Dr. Reynolds, I understand. Board members, would you like it broken down for you by your district and then the statewide data? Is that, is that possible? I do not want to ask for, okay. So if you wouldn't mind, you'll receive your data by district and then the statewide numbers. And then again, because we're seeing this for the first time today, if you have any questions about this, you'll jot those down and give those to either Mr. Markham, Chief of Staff, or Dr. Mackey. He's going to follow up with you on questions from today's data. Please, continue.
Okay, so then if we look at our science data for our summative, you would say that we saw improvements as well. We are, because we only test fourth, sixth, and eighth for our summative. And we went from 39% to 41%, 28% to 30%, and then 40 to 41%. and then forty to forty-one percent. Okay, so if we look at our alternate, our alternate data, this, of course, is ELA. We're going to see some gains with our alternate students as well. And remember, these are the students that have a connective cognitive disability, and those, these students are the ones that are qualified. Remember, when we do this data, it will be those students that have met that definition and are qualified to be on the alternate path, alternate standards, and also are taking this assessment, would not be taking the summative assessment. So for second grade, we went from twelve percent to eighteen percent. Third grade, twenty-eight, so we went down one percent. For the fourth grade, twenty to twenty-six percent. Fifth grade, twenty-nine to twenty-one percent. Sixth grade, twenty-eight to twenty-five percent. Seventh grade, thirty-nine to forty percent. Eighth grade, twenty-two to twenty-four percent. Tenth grade, thirty-three to thirty-seven percent. And then eleventh grade, thirty-nine to forty percent. Okay, if we move on to our math. We're going to see some declines here as well. We go from ten percent to two percent for second graders. Third graders, nine percent to thirteen percent. Fourth grade, we go from twenty to fourteen percent. Fifth grade, twenty to twenty-one percent. Sixth grade, thirty, thirty percent to twenty-one percent. Seventh grade, thirty to fourteen percent. Eighth grade, six percent, twelve percent. Tenth grade, four percent, eighteen percent. And then eleventh grade, thirty-two to six percent.
Madam Chair.
Sir?
Can we ask, particularly on this particular report, some annotation after we get the final data for some written analysis about why some of these scores is picked? Particularly, if you look at Level Four and the preliminary data, we had zero percent, one percent, and some of those proficiency level at Level Four, even though the, I would like some annotation.
I think that's, that's.
If that's okay with you, please, may I repress that for you?
Absolutely. I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Okay, then if we look at our science for alternate students, we go from forty-seven percent to fifty-two percent. Again, for science, we mimic the summative and also our high school assessment, so we test in grades four, six, eight, then ten and eleven. So we go from fourth grade, forty-seven to fifty-two percent. Sixth grade, thirty-eight to thirty-two percent. Eighth grade, forty-four to fifty-one percent. Tenth grade, forty-seven to forty-five percent. And then our eleventh graders, forty-nine to fifty-two percent. Okay.
What's in the annotation of Level Four? When you've had the fifty-two percent, and you look at sixth grade, zero percent with proficient at Level Four, and I think we need some annotation on some of those explanations? Because when you combine proficiency at Level Three and Level Four, and you look at the one percent, it's eleventh grade of Level Four at eleventh grade, and only zero percent at sixth grade?
No, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you for your accepting my question.
Okay, if we look, I wanted to give you about three years for our access for ELAs, just to note that the population is increasing around, yeah, and we are having to estimate what our population will be as we move forward. So we're looking at possibly mimicking that again, that the population is going to increase again this year. And you'll see that since twenty, we have exited. It is going up, but it may not be going up as fast as we want, but we're at four-point-eight, four percent. So that's nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-nine students that exited the program.
When you say exited, I understand, but would you just give us a, you know, a?
That means that the students that are ELs, they have scored four-point-eight.
And then they're off.
Yes, ma'am, but they are still monitored. Even though they exit the program, they still want them for a number of years.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
They still give them that support.
Right.
Because they don't want them to fall back on.
Go backwards.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so if we look at our RAR keys, which is administered, again, twelfth grade, again, this is an optional assessment, but just wanted to give you some numbers that we have, we tested, again, an optional assessment, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight students out of the twelfth grade. Out of that, if you look at the numbers, to meet benchmark and to receive a CCR, they, it's silver, gold, and platinum. So that's roughly twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four students that have met benchmark. They still receive, if they score a three on three tests, they still receive a bronze certificate, which some employers will recognize for employment. But our benchmark is, of course, silver, gold, and platinum. So that's roughly about sixty-two percent of the students that tested that met our benchmark. Hey, and just wanted to give you some highlights of our NAEP that will be administered in twenty-four. Again, this is what we call our big year. We're, we're already notifying, the districts have already been notified, and we're in this week and next week notifying the schools that will be testing in the spring. Right now, we have ninety districts that have been identified. We have two-hundred-and-twenty schools, and that's going to be roughly around about eight-five-hundred students, not counting possibly some of these that will be involved in our high school transcript study, which is our twelfth graders. And of course, when that data comes back, we pass that on to Mr. Stevens and his team, who will look at that because it does talk to them and give them an idea about the course taking patterns of the students and how that, they do look at that and measure that with the educational achievement of NAEP. Then, of course, we will do some field trials, and there was only three schools selected in Alabama. And then we'll do the international, which is the TALUS, which is the Teaching and Learning International Survey. This gets some ideas about where teachers, how they feel about education and principals. They just ask the teachers and principals questions about their backgrounds, their work environments, and also the professional development that's needed. And then, of course, we'll do a pilot study with eighteen schools. They're going to evaluate the new items that NAEP will have and will be developing. They'll continue to explore the online assessment platform. And again, they'll study the transition to different devices. They're doing a study this upcoming in the twenty-twenty-four with the difference between Chromebook and, I can't remember the other device, but they're looking at comparing the devices that they are using because they want to be more compatible with what the students are using, because what they're bringing in for the students to use has not been what most districts are using. So they're wanting to do that compatibility study so that they'll be able to transfer, transfer into that over the next upcoming years. So right now, we, again, we have, districts have been notified, and then the schools are being notified, and we're doing our best to get all that done by Friday. Sorry.
Anything else for them? Anything else right now? Dr. Mackey, did you have any remarks?
No, just, I would like to say a big thank to you, to Maggie and to Sandy back there from DRC, and also Tony Thacker's here from ACT. I want to add DRC because it has been, as y'all know, a commitment of ours. When we, when we came in, this was task one on day one, was to get us a state test that met the requirement. And part of our commitment was, we would start releasing data a lot earlier. And of course, then we had, it was supposed to launch in twenty-twenty and didn't, and then in twenty-one, we weren't able to hit our targets because it was our first year. But we are recovered from the pandemic in that way, procedurally at least, and they've really worked hard to hit the targets and get data out early. Most states still do not release their data until late fall of November is the typical window. And so for you to be looking at data in, you know, the reading data last month and this data this month, and then to have all of our schools' data out by first August is really remarkable. And it couldn't be done without Maggie and her team, and then Sandy and what they do at DRC too, to make sure that we can turn so much around so fast. And I would even want to say thank you to her, and I thank you to Dr. Thacker, who used to be one of us, and now is our state rep for ACT and joined us today too, because ACT does the same thing, they work really fast, it's just we're not, those are not, you're getting them today, but we've not had to work on quite as tight a timeline. Our numbers are looking, I mean, they're moving in the right direction, they're obviously, you know, we want to continue to do better and better. One of the big takeaways for me was the ELA data, when you look back, it's the first time we've had at least fifty percent proficiency in every grade. And so even though it's not, there's always ups and downs, and when we get to look at this school-level data, obviously, not every school is going to be performing as well as others. But as a state, we are making the progress we need to make. And then my last comment would be, remind you, it is a NAEP year, and that is a, it'll be unusual because it's going to be all computerized, as she said, it's going to be very different. They've already warned us that that means the release of the results will be delayed, probably several months, but, but we'll, our schools will be giving the NAEP next January through March. So just be aware that that'll be coming up in spring or winter of twenty-four. That's it.
I was wondering, could we ask maybe if Sandy or Tony wants to say it, just a?
Absolutely.
Would y'all like to?
Anything?
Sandy Wees and Tony Thacker, would y'all like to come up?
Oh, we're happy to work with you and really enjoy working with Maggie and her team on all the detail that goes into putting the numbers together.
Thank you. Tony?
All I'm going to say is that I think that the rebound that is occurring on the ACT scores is something that needs to be heralded, because I think it speaks to the fact that coming out of COVID, that schools are improving because our students are able to have more face time with the teachers. And it's an opportunity to really herald the value of the teachers and classroom instruction.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks.
May I pose a question?
Absolutely.
Are the schools selected for trial and testing, are the names of those schools proprietary with NAEP, or are they available under, even under limited disclosure?
I may, I'm not sure about that. I know we cannot publish them.
Correct. And it's always been not published in?
So no, they're not available. I've not seen them myself. I do usually, I do get a list because I usually do send, like to send a note to the principals of those schools to encourage them, but they're very tight with that information.
Okay.
Some of us are under oath, if you embargo, I mean, we release them, we're subject to it, and that's charged, and that's why I asked about that question.
Yes, ma'am. But I just want to say thank you for all of your support, because we can't do our work without your support, and Dr. Mackey's leadership and his team. Thank you for your support.
Good job, Maggie.
Thank you.
And I would ask her not to go too far. We, so, so, there are only, a couple of other items for us, only one other item on here, and that's just really open discussion about kind of where we are and what we're looking at. We've had some questions since last meeting, so took the opportunity to, to look at some of those. I don't know where my notes are. But I have Bonnie Short here with us today, of course, leads the Abour Read Initiative. We talked last month about the reading and where we were on our statewide numbers. You got your district numbers, and she's answered several questions since then. Of course, she's here, Maggie's here, to talk about anything you want to talk about, only the testing or the instructional components. I think AJ went through some things this morning, but somewhere, I don't know where it is, but, oh, there. Thanks. I have a extra, I had three questions, if I could, just, that were submitted by board members, and I have the answers here that, my answer, Shantia Washington got these for me, so she might be better to talk deeper about. But first was, how many third graders would have been held back if the Literacy Act had been implemented this year, or the revision potential had been held, had been held? And how many second graders are in danger of being held back next year based on the test scores we looked at last month? And so I have those. So the, it's a hard question to answer because there's more than one step. But based on this year's testing, had we just looked at test scores and nothing else, we'd have had twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three students. That's how many scored below grade level on the initial test? And then eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-three second graders. Now, as you know, then what happens is, those students were notified even this year about summer reading camps. We are already getting, some summer reading camps are over, most of them are over, because most of them try to finish by fourth of July, the fourth, but a few of them are still going. And then they issue the alternative test. So we don't have those numbers in yet, but as I mentioned last month, last year, we know that of those who went, half of them, they passed the second test. So I would, so if I could just carry the math out, we said if we had twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three, assuming they all went to camp, and if half of them passed the test, and that'd be about sixty-five-hundred, that would still be in danger of being held back. Then the next level is, they can be evaluated through a portfolio assessment. And so they can be passed by a team looking at the portfolio of their writing samples or reading, writing. And so that, I don't, but I have no way of knowing how many might have passed with that because you don't get to that point unless you, you get those students. So next year, that'll be happening. And then the fourth way, of course, is students can be promoted through an IEP process if they qualify for special needs. So that would, you know, in worst-case scenario, it'd be twelve thousand students would have been held back this year. In all likelihood, it would have been somewhere probably in the four-to-five-thousand-student range. I know everybody hates to hear the M-word, but just comparing to Mississippi, because they've been doing the retention for about nine years now, that's about, that's comparable to their numbers. So they start out, also, I think we had, what was it, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four percent, twenty, were below grade level. I think their, I think their number was about twenty-six percent below grade level on the first round of testing, but then they retain about ten percent. And the end, only about ten percent are retained. And ten percent for us, pretty simple numbers, if you look at that, we tested about fifty-four thousand, so that'd be about fifty-four hundred. So we're on track, you know, I don't want to use the word track, really, but that's, we're pretty much following the same track that Mississippi did, and so that would be our assumption statewide. And that, that's what the question was. But I want to make a caveat to that, that obviously, that varies from school to school, because we had some schools where forty percent of their students scored below grade level. I talked to a superintendent this morning that's in one of our very challenged districts, and they had good participation in summer reading camps, but she thinks their pass rate is going to be about forty percent. So of the, so, you know, she was hoping that she'd have sixty or seventy percent, but it's going to be about forty. So she's just looking at, you know, what would that look like a year from now? And she's, of course, they did second grade reading camp too, and she's doing, she, she thinks her number's probably in the forty, forty-five percent pass on the second grade assessment too, so which kind of gives us some, you know, prediction. So it's, it is good. I think that this year, we're not doing the retention, although it was a fight in the legislature, but it gave us some real data to look at real, you know, real effects. The second question was, what's our communication plan to parents for upcoming third grade students to let them know they may not be in danger? This, it's the current third graders, the uprising third graders. So there is, from the assessment side of the house, there's a parent letter called an individual student report that goes home, it's made available to the districts to report. We do also, these letters are made available to LEAs for each student, for those that meet and those that do not meet grade level requirements in May. So they've already, they should have already gotten those. And that's how we, of course, determine summer participation. But we have a sample of that letter that I can send to you. I don't think it's in assembly, but we can upload it. And it's up to each district, though, to provide them to the parents. So we don't. So we don't have a way to get them to the parent. We provide the reports, we give them to the district. I would assume and hope that everybody sent them out. And, but we don't really have a way to check that unless we get a call that somebody did not, you know, a school's call. Somebody, parents will tell them, schools, I can assure you of that. But we've not gotten any calls that anybody says, hey, we didn't get letters at our school. And then the communication plan about the danger of failing in the Literacy Act, there, I don't, I know that we have a sample letter. And I'm looking at Ms. Short back there because I have a, have a copy of it. It's a sample letter that goes to parents. You know, districts can change the letter as they want to. But again, there's no, we don't have like a set letter that we send out. We've talked about that, you know, a letter from the, with a letter from the State Department. But, but the consensus among our executive team was a letter from your principal or your local person probably means more to a parent than a letter from the state. That they, you know, they want to see something from the principal that says. But that's something we can certainly talk about. The, and then the third one, our local boards. And this is a good question, aware of the number of students that are in danger of being held back in their system. Again, they should be because I talked about this in my talk to school boards back in the summer, if they were, came to the AASB meeting. But, but that is a real question because if there's, if, if we have 140, 140 traditional school boards and then 10 charter boards, and if, you know, 135 of them are doing what they're supposed to do, and they're discussing this at the board table, and they're, they are aware of what their numbers look like. But if we have five districts where the superintendent didn't bring it to the board, that's a real problem. But again, we don't necessarily have a way of knowing unless, you know, you can get, you find out or hear that. Certainly with the ones that are our, our most intense schools, so like our CSI schools, we're followed, we're closely watching those kind of things. But that expectation is there. I think that's something for us to talk about because we've, you know, again, our executive team, we've talked about what more communication do we need to send to boards? In other words, most of our communication is with superintendents. Always has been and probably always should be. But do we need to send something directly to board presidents that says, you know, here's your number, and you need to be of second, those last year's second graders, the rising third graders, and be aware that you're having these discussions? So that's something we, we've talked about, we've not moved forward on. But those are three questions I had in particular, asked from y'all. But I will say, I know that AASB and SSA have done some communications with their superintendents and board members. I don't, I'm not privy to all their communications. They copied me on some of them, though, and I know that I've, I've seen some things go across.
Are we allowed to ask for copies or confirmation that every, from AASB, that every board has received their number? And every superintendent has reviewed their number with their board? Are we, are we able to ask for that information?
Absolutely.
And the only other question I have, board members, in the past, when we've had major initiatives in the state, I don't know if we paid for it or if, or if it came from other monies. But are we allowed to create public service announcements around the law that would be heard on the radio and television? I feel like so many of our families watch television or listen maybe to the radio or podcasts or whatever mode we have to create public service announcements. And it doesn't have to be negative, it's just know the law. You know, if you have a child, a young child, the Literacy Act will apply this.
I think the most critical part is when they, when they, the numbers come, and then I would assume that the local board would give it to the superintendents or, you know, the superintendents. And then they'd break it down to each of the individual schools. And then the schools would have the numbers, and then attach those numbers to the actual kindlets. And then that princ-, I mean, that principal and teacher should be sitting down face to face with that mama guardian whomever and say, here we are, it's middle August to the late of August, don't wait longer than that. This is our game plan. We need to be on the same page and write down those, that documentation. And that is the only way, is that face to face. And then the parents can have a voice and ask the questions and be informed, and what can we do together? Instead of it being, your kid's not going to pass or something. This is a more of a proactive, how can we do it? And I'm telling you now, that is the, that's the only way to move forward. And you can have the parents sign it. They write that, and if they don't come, you try three times. That's all you can do. But all the service announcements are, no offense, it's a good idea, but it's for not.
I was about to say, I think it's a great idea. However, it's law intimate, people can ask questions. Because just hearing it on the radio or seeing it on television, you are aware of it. It brings awareness. But I think understanding comes when you sit down and communicate.
Sure. And it makes a good point. Maybe social media is a better place for that to be shared, where it can grow organically. But I think that, I think that our families are not aware that we're a year away from retaining students. We know it.
This is this year.
That's this year, that's correct. Well, I understand, but.
Well, we're in this school year.
But the teachers need, once they get their student roll, they need to know those kids and they need to sit down. And that should be their number one priority.
Yeah.
Whatever method, that's what they need to do, as fast as they can.
Yes, sir.
We have a relationship with the double ASB, double ASA to, to train out of ETF funds, correct? Is there a component in that that we could see with those organizations that they actually are carrying out a component to do what we're asking for?
We can, we definitely talk about that. So for AASB.
Because summer meets role.
Yeah.
Perhaps we should have done this before those conferences. But given those conferences over, and School Board Association, I think Dr. Chesnut, who is our liaison with School Board Association, could better speak to that or work with that. But it seems if they have a contract to do training, and we, from our organizational level, determine that's a critical component, can we not have some communication from you or some organizational structure to see that that's a structural component in one of their sessions?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. Bart's back there, I'm asking him to speak.
Yeah, there's Bart.
On spot, if you want to. So AASB, we do a training grant with them for school boards. And there is a, Dr. Payne has a meeting set up with Sally Smith soon to talk about that. He and Autumn Jeter, where Dr. Jeter is back there. So Dr. Jeter is our liaison from the department to the AASB. And we'll be glad to put that in with the, with them on that discussion. Actually, probably good timing because we were supposed to try to meet last week, and then it got postponed because of my being out in Texas. And so it's probably good that we can, it's coming up. They've got scheduled something in the next couple of weeks. We could certainly ask them about, not only the board training piece, but something to communicate to all boards. We'll get with them on their communications, superintendents as well. Obviously, they, we've had a lot of communications with superintendents. But again, that's not to say that there's not one or two somewhere that might not be. But I cannot imagine, really, based on the discussions that I've had, that, that there would be any superintendents not clued in to the, what's happening with their students and the danger. The biggest challenge I'm hearing from superintendents, again, heard it from a superintendent this morning, is the instructions going on. You heard this from AJ Buckner, did he slip back in the room this morning?
There he is.
Okay. I want to paraphrase something you said. The instruction's going on, but it's not on the appropriate grade level. So the superintendent I talked to this morning said, Dr. Mackey, our problem is we have students, this is a brand new superintendent, started this spring. You know, I have students in the first grade that don't know all their letters. And that's a preschool skill. They should have known that before they started school. And so, and you could say, well, they should have been retained in kindergarten or whatever. But, but they're in first grade and they don't know all their letters. So the teachers, it's not like the teacher's, you know, doing nothing. She's teaching them letters. But that's not what they're tested on at the end of the year because that's not a first grade skill. So, so the problem is not that there's not instruction going on, it's the instruction is not on grade level. And they're being tested on grade level. And so that's a real, and Bonnie and AJ, if I'm wrong, tell me. But that's what I'm hearing from superintendents. That's their biggest challenge, is how do I teach third grade level when my students, you know, I'm still teaching first grade level skills? And, and then, of course, y'all know, in our poorest and most challenged communities, that's, that's an issue. And I will say one more thing, and I, I promise I'll move on from it. But the, the even deeper challenge is those parents, in many cases, I may not cast aspersions to those parents, they don't know their kids are below grade level. They, they don't know that their child is not on third grade level because they know what they know. And that comes back to the communication plan. I think that's why what y'all are saying is so important. They, they have to know in second grade, and even though we don't test it, in first grade, where their students are. This is a problem now, and we've got to get students up. And I, I think we all know that intrinsically. And I think our principals and superintendents know it. But it is a, it is an ongoing challenge.
I'd like to just mention one of the school systems in my district. And as much as a lot of the students that we're talking about are in District Five, I just want to commend Willcox County. Their community leaders came together and wrote a grant to train facilitators throughout the county, through the churches. And so I've gone down there several times. And I want to thank Bonnie Short for the information that she's provided for me. But they're utilizing the resources that ARI has developed. And we had an opportunity to meet in person, I think, twice. But as a result of that, they are paying facilitators from those various communities to come and be trained on how to support and assist parents. And so those facilitators are going out into their own communities, informing parents of what to ask for, what to do. And we, recently, we did a Zoom just following up. And to hear the facilitators who are not educators, some may not even be educated. However, as a result of the training and the resources and materials, to hear them talk about the various components of reading, to hear them discuss whether or not their child was on grade level, this is what we're doing, is very encouraging. And we are hoping in District Five, and this is something that I want to do, that we can replicate that model in other districts where we have a high concentrations of students that are not on grade level. It's going to take more than just the school system. And I think it's commendable that the community has gotten involved. And we're just really excited about it, you know. And there are things going on in other locations as well. I know the governor has the initiative of making sure kids have books. But also, we have great organizations that are coming together and providing books and resources for the children so that we can begin the process of establishing home libraries. So we have a challenge, but I know if we sit back and do nothing, we won't see change. But to hear the involvement and the planning of involving parents, informing parents. I like the idea of including social media because most parents are on social media. And so let's continue to be intentional in making sure that we equip and empower our parents to help their children at home.
How long did that process take in Willcox County?
It's, it's been several months. They reached out to me. And I guess we've met maybe three or four times. We've had follow-up meetings, and we will have another one in July. But the project plan initially was to go through the first semester of this upcoming academic year. And then to really look back and see, do we see a difference in the progress of those students and the parents that participated? And so the good problem is now parents are telling other parents, listen, hey, you can do this, or you can do that. And things as simple as using the QR codes that provides the resources. A lot of times, it's not that parents don't want to help, they just don't know how. And so the resources that have been developed through ARI actually tell the parents what to say and do. The biggest challenge, again, is to make sure that they know that the resources are available. And so we're excited about it. I spoke with Dr. Smiley about maybe sharing that idea in their upcoming superintendent district meeting so that, again, we're not leaving it to chance. And we're involving the community as well as school leaders and all of the stakeholders that can assist us.
Got to plant that seed.
Yes. In fact, Willcox has a plan coming up, I think it's going to be in September, October, where they are inviting legislators that represent the district.
And when we, you know, I heard you say, or somebody said about parents, let them know that they're not on grade level. That, they don't know what that means. I mean, not many parents really know what that means, you know. We need, as you say, to lay it out definitively, and especially in a way by another parent speaking to a parent. That has great power in it, and church members. So, and we need to make those partners in education. We have them all over the state. Let's start getting them rallied back again.
So we've got the materials, as you mentioned. ARI's got it. So it's more that you hear and will, that's, I knew a little bit about that, but I learned a lot right now, so.
Well, I did reach out to ARI's Community Engagement Specialist, I'm not sure of her title. But she has agreed to support us in any way. So we're excited about that. And again, I think it will work. And it's something that, it's just good to have all the stakeholders at the table.
Please keep us up to date in the fall on how that's going since it's kind, it's almost like a pilot that we can watch, that's sort of organic, which is great. And I think we all want parent ownership in the process. So that's wonderful news.
You can create almost a YouTube type of thing where you stay, just like you just said, tweak it and plant that seed, and then you go to the next one, and then have, you know, testimonials or whatever.
Yeah. Do we have a YouTube channel? I don't know to the YouTube channel much.
We do, that's what we, that's what we, actually, that's why our, these work sessions and all are on YouTube. If you want to go watch them. We don't post a lot of other things on YouTube. It's mostly the board meetings. We do have a YouTube channel, though.
Yeah. I mean, maybe. A lot of people use it. I know I do some cooking channels through YouTube.
Well, sure, that part, not.
Let's just talk some reality here.
Any other, regarding item E today, do we have any other questions? Yes, Dr. Reynolds?
A question came up as a result of Dr. Mackey's questions. We know that we fund and increase funding in the preschool program. Are we tracking the data of those preschool completers as they enter into the first grade? If they're on grade level, in order to track it? You know, it's world, it's been acclaimed that we have a data to anticipate some of those superintendents that tell you they've got first graders that don't know their alphabet, letters, or numer- numbers, the skill sets. And we, we said that we were talking about first. And we said that we were talking about first grade readiness. We've never really implemented that. We left that up to local levels. Are we tracking data out of that preschool program into our kindergarten, first grade level?
I'll, I'm going to write that down. Yes, that is being, of course, part of it, Miss Bonnie Short might have an answer now if you want to address it or.
I just answered your question.
Yeah.
How did you answer?
Well, yes, we do. But Bonnie.
So our allocate data is utilized for that. And so at the beginning of here, when that allocate data comes through, then it shows where our students are in various categories, including their literacy, as far as when they're coming into school. So we can see how all of our students are related to the preschool or not. And then Department of Early Childhood Education is working to compile that information to show where they have their specific first-class pre-Ks and where they are.
So you're tracking the data on those that have had the pre-K program in the allocate data? And that's reported out?
Tracy.
Yes, ma'am.
The YouTube channel, forty-three people are watching us.
Oh, hello.
By the way.
We don't have a large audience.
But there's some.
But maybe if we were making announcements about reading and math, we might have more folks tuning in.
We have to be more entertaining, everybody. Let's get those numbers up.
I'm going to bring us back to our agenda. Dr. Mackey, as you laugh. Dr. Mackey is going to cover, and please do follow up with your questions. Now, I'm serious about that. Item nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Dr. Mackey.
So item nine is our last agenda item. This is the annual appropriation of funds. Just as a reminder, the legislature, of course, sets the appropriation that goes to the schools. But the way the foundation program law is written, it's the board that actually authorizes the release of those funds from the treasury. And so what you have to do each year is amend the administrative code, which authorizes the release of funds, to match what the legislature's just done. So there are really four changes. You've got the whole thing in there, but there are four main changes. One is on pages fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, which I can send you this if you want to see it, if you want to follow. It changes things like the act number, the fiscal year, those regular, those language changes. So it went from FY two oh two three to FY two oh two four, for instance. The second change is substantial. It's the divisor change. So the legislature this year in grades four through six changed the divisor from two oh point four three to two oh point oh six. It's not a lot. It generates less than two hundred teachers, I think. But it is a step in that direction. It is what we've been talking about for years, getting more teachers in those middle grades. And I talked to the budget chairs. They, even though they didn't feel like they had money to do substantial changes, they wanted to send the message that they do, they are hearing the board and they do think it's important. And so I think, you know, you just keep hammering away at things. When we come back next month and begin talking about our next budget request, we ought to have some deep conversations about that and where we really want to, you know, we've talked about our long-term goal. But maybe, I've been thinking differently about that. A plan for, you know, we know like we're not going to get thirty-two hundred teachers in one year, which is what we put in our plan last year. But would we target three hundred twenty and ask them to increase it every year for a dozen years to get us where we want to be? So feel free to think about that. But they changed on page fourteen, it changes that divisor to match the language in the ad. The third change is it added language related to the allowable use of classroom materials and supplies as adopted in Act 2023 dash three seventy-nine. And this is that, if you recall, Tina mentioned it this morning, I think, but they bifurcated the teacher supply money this year. So we asked for a thousand dollars per teacher. We got a thousand dollars per teacher. But they put a thousand, they put five hundred, close to five hundred, starting October one. And the other five hundred got funded out of the supplemental so that it's available before October one. And so they changes that language to match the change in the law. And then the fourth change is it added language to relate to the minimum hourly rate for employees on the salary schedule as adopted in 2023 three seventy-nine. And that, again, Tina went through it this morning, but that has been substantial. If you've not heard from superintendents, I have heard from them because legislature put fifteen million dollars more in OCE. But with it said that every employee, every full-time employee must make a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour. We had some employees making as low, I knew we had some making twelve and it came to light yesterday, we had some making in the eight-dollar range. So that's a substantial change. And then the language says that you can't like just leave that person from eight dollars to fifteen and then the person that was fifteen oh five stays at fifteen oh five. You have to adjust your other steps. Well, that's where superintendents are starting now to have to figure out their step language because that means everybody along the chain is getting increases. A lot of our districts already had all their employees above fifteen dollars an hour, so it didn't really affect them. But again, some of them did not. So that is in here and it makes that change. And we would bring those to you for formal adoption in August. And then, of course, we start sending out those warrants in October. As a reminder, more for the public than the board. The department doesn't have a checkbook. We don't actually send money. It's the state, we issue warrants on the treasury based on the authorization. And so I just remind people because sometimes we get questions, how does the department send money? Well, the department doesn't really send money. Money comes from across the street to the districts, but we have to authorize them to send it.
Ask for clarification, Dr. Mackey. You said presenters for presentation. In a normal adoption of administrative code, as you've taught me in the past, it's presented, it goes for forty-five days of discussion. Are we talking about an emergency adoption? So we don't, we bypass that? Because otherwise, forty-five days would be August, September, October before we adopt it, which would be already in the fiscal year.
It'd be, yes, sir. No, so we won't have to do it because we do it in September. So what we'll do is you've got today, in August, it'll be announced the intent to change the code. And then in September, we vote on the.
So we don't have to do the forty-five days?
That would be forty-five.
That would be forty-six.
Yeah, it's fine to do it.
From September, from August to September.
Am I wrong about that? If I got my days wrong.
We're going to meet in September, August. And it won't be forty-five days between the August meeting and September meeting. Unless it's, but we can adopt an emergency measure according to what you told me before, if I'm remembering correctly.
Right, and do an emergency measure that counts for six months. We're behind this year because the legislature didn't adjourn until after our May meeting and it put us behind. So I'll tell you what, I will refer that to the lawyers. If we need to adopt an emergency rule, we may have to do an emergency rule in August and then a permanent rule in October. But I'll let them get us an answer on that. I'm not qualified to answer that right up front, but it's a very good question because it is a month later than what we would normally be doing this.
Dr. Chestnut had a question.
I do. I want to refer back to the presentation that A.J. made. I want to, is there any way you could share that support and accountability gap for turnaround schools?
Oh, yeah.
If you could send that. And then my second question is, are there any plans to extend those turnaround practices to priority schools since you're seeing results?
I speak, ideally, everything that we're doing in turnaround schools can be extended without the appropriation funds because we don't have any control over that. So that's just what's been appropriated.
Doesn't mean the department couldn't.
Right, but we will definitely carry the practices we're doing in turnaround schools forward into the priorities of this matter.
My third question, then, are there any funds available to implement those practices since we're seeing results?
So that specifically, remember, there's a, the legislature, this is the second year they funded. It's a ten-million-dollar appropriation that is split among those schools. Not evenly necessarily, but based on their report. Plus, we got some money to pilot another program and that's to hire auxiliary teachers. And we gave first choice of that to these schools. So there's no, so the short answer is no. I mean, we don't have another, that's essentially about eight hundred thousand dollars extra per school that these schools get. We don't have that for every school. That's a CSI school. I think that is, I can speak for the legislature and the governor, but I think that is a part of why she wanted to do this, was to see if we could identify what level of support would be needed to be able to target and then to expand that. But for this year, no, we don't have that. Now, it's not a, right now, there's a lot of ESTR funds. So a lot of that same work can be expanded through ESTR funds. But when you ask that question this time next year, I know you're setting me up. That's going to be, that is going to be an issue because those ESTR funds are going to run out and we're going to hit a place where the work that we are learning makes a difference can't, you know, can't be continued without additional support. Because that's what's, I mean, they're doing great work, but a big part of what they're doing is putting more feet on the ground. You've got more people.
They just like to have money for community service grants.
We do.
They just feel that it's small.
It's really pretty small compared to this amount.
This is a large amount of money per school because you talk about, some of these schools have two hundred fifty students and you put essentially, you know, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars more. You can hire several more people and some of them are hiring additional people. And some of them have not been able to find the people because of the areas they're in, they can't find the people, but they've got the money. And of course, remember, that money's only been available since October one. This is not even a one-year-old program yet. But yes, ma'am, that's a good question.
I have a question, yes, please.
Okay.
A.J., in reference to the schools that were identified and are now clear, do we have the next steps as to what's going to be done for those to make sure they continue to be clear? Is there any way that could be identified to let us know? Because there are several, I'm from the Birmingham area, that were identified on the list that are clear. But I know if some things don't continue or if some things are not sustained, they will be on that list again. So I just wanted to know.
Yeah, absolutely. Everything we're doing in turnaround schools is not grade-specific. We're doing things to build capacity so that we can walk away. We don't want to work ourselves out of a job. And so these schools, these communities can support their own schools. And so that's the ultimate goal because it can't just be a continual flow of support. They need to be able to be self-sufficient.
Well, I'd like to get with you to see where I have clear, what has been established in order to continue and sustain that. Okay.
And then my question is, once your wonderful kids become clear and you're sustaining them and helping them, do you have the next phase of the next fifteen or ten or whatever it may be to fill those little slots unless it's funded?
That's not what I've heard.
Yeah.
That's the blimmin' about what you were just saying.
And this was the thing, remember, the governor, one of the things she wanted was to, I'm going to use the word adopt, these schools and do a long-term measure. Because there was some discussion about, well, will we do fifteen schools one year and then the next year have fifteen different ones? And she didn't want to do that. She wants to commit to these. The goal is that this would eventually be sunset. But then when we take what we've learned from it and create a new broader program based on those, this kind of community takeover, you know, the school, involving the HR, pre-K and all those things.
Just about what you were just speaking in Willcox County.
The wraparound services.
Yes, wraparound services.
We should take all the education support money.
I'm going to, yeah. Dr. Richardson, a couple of minutes to discuss briefly our board retreat and then I'm going to say one more word and then we're going to be dismissed. But, Dr. Richardson.
Thank you. Yes, board members, we're scheduled to have our retreat on August 29th and August 30th. We will be in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And we are to arrive around four o'clock on the 29th. However, you will be getting the specifics as to where we'll be staying. We want to have dinner that afternoon. We're looking at entities perhaps working with us the way they did in Alden. And Mr. Markham is helping us with that also. So you'll hear more from me. Everyone around the table has confirmed that they will be there. But Dr. Mackey, I need to get with you on how many of the State Department personnel will be there so that we can confirm our numbers. And I just want to thank Dr. Daria and his staff. They're working with us to make sure that this is an enjoyable experience, not that we are rivals with Alden. However, we just want you to see what Alabama brings where legends are made.
That was good.
Thank you.
Well done.
You're the one that gave her the last word.
I would comment.
No, not, not.
You're sitting there to me. Auburn is the national fishing camp.
Oh, that's true. We did have.
We can have a live one here.
You sent that out.
I did. I just want to wrap this up today with a report that I'm diving into. But Bloomberg produced a report that for the first time, the southern states are taking away, have taken away the economic engine from the northeast and the west coast. They're calling it the Southern Six. It's a group of states that are growing economically so quickly, the opportunities for future employment are unbelievable. It's unfortunate that Alabama is not in the Southern Six. I would like to make it the Southern Seven and have the state of Alabama be included because the students that we are focusing on right now, the third, first, second, and third graders in their literacy and their numeracy, a decade from now, will be working in these companies that are moving to the South. They are going to have earning power that they have never had before and opportunities that they have never seen before, that Alabama has never seen. So I know I can bring up boring business stuff sometimes, but I do think it's important for us to remember why we're so focused on student learning. It's because we want our students to be healthy and independent, to stay in Alabama and raise their families here. So I thank you so much for your hard work today. It's two o'clock. If you're okay with that, we will adjourn for the day. Board members?
Thank you. Thank you.